New Paltz Planning Board Meeting, February 25th, 2013. First off is a review of approval of the January minutes. And I need Lynn, Tom, Peter, and myself to take a look at that. If there are any questions or comments. Request approval of the minutes of January 14th, 2013.
Two more seconds.
Lynn and Peter, whichever way you want to do it, they're on a buzz at the same time. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We'll postpone the February 11th meeting minutes until next time. This is the time we open up the meeting for any public comment on anything they wish to bring before the board at this time. Yes, Paul?
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everyone. I rehearsed this. I can do it under five minutes, maybe four. And I promised my wife I would stay. Oh, there's no five-minute on that.
Well, you're looking at the crowd here. I may give you a little leeway on that.
I won't take any. I promised my wife I'd stay to what I wrote and not wander. This public comment concerns the planning board's deliberations with regard to the Wilmerite site plan and the JAM Incorporated subdivision applications. Last Wednesday, February 13th, Wilmerite submitted an application and made a presentation to the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency. Several of us from New Paltz were there. In fact, it was the largest group of residents that they've ever experienced from a single venue. But they welcomed us. I did a one-wandering, but they were glad to have the engagement that you've been used to hear. Wilmerite is applying for three tax exemptions, as you know, from their application, and both preferences for a 25-year period. Those three are payment in lieu of taxes, commonly called a PILOT, with the acronym P-I-L-O-T, a sublease transaction. For example, they would lease from Goshawk and then sublease to the IDA. That has tax preferences. And then a mortgage tax exemption. As we all have bought homes and paid the mortgage tax, this is something else they're looking and seeking legally and rightfully a relief from if they can be accepted for that. I believe you're attempting to ascertain the exact dollar value of each of those preferences as you deliberate. I've watched your discussions because you're looking at the fiscal environmental impacts under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, commonly, again, in acronym SEQA. The potential fiscal impacts on the town of New Paltz, the New Paltz Central School District, and the Ulster County, those are the three taxing authorities, can only be accurately evaluated once you gather the information you're seeking, once you know how much the taxing authorities would lose over the next 25 years, and by the way, how much Wilmerite and JAM would save. I mean, that's the equation. If the IDA approves their application. As they sit before you, the applicants surely know precisely what that number is. But I know you're seeking to get it. It's been a little frustrating for many of us to watch that process, but it seems to be working. Last week, I visited the town of New Paltz Tax Assessor's Office to confirm the tax revenue numbers that she had compiled, following a request to do so by a number of interested citizens. The assessor's office confirmed for me that the estimated potential revenues to the taxing authorities, if the applicants pay their fair share, would be as follows. $906,000 annually to the New Paltz Central School District, $377,000 annually to the town of New Paltz, and $208,000 annually to the Ulster County. Now, that would be in the first year of the full assessment. These numbers add up to $1,491,000 of annual tax payments, which the applicant is seeking to avoid. I can't say I blame them. These tax revenues would also likely increase over the next 25 years, just as the taxes on our homes have increased in the past 25 years through assessments. If the IDA were to grant the applications, the full exemptions that are applied for, the applicant would be required to pay less than $200,000 annually for the next 25 years, according to the members of the board and what I called up, anywhere from $116,000 or $200,000. But that's incredible. $200,000 a year versus $1,491 and rising. But that is facts, and I urge, obviously, you'll be checking this and verifying it, but that's what we've gotten so far. I respectfully request that the planning board members ask Wilmerite and JAM if they agree with these estimates. At least that would move the discussion forward. The applicants claim they are proposing a public-private partnership. Potential partners should be eager to share information, engage in public disclosure, and help one another to conduct their respective due diligence. That's what a healthy partnership is based on. I hope you will also inquire what the applicants believe the assessed valuation will be on each of the three major real estate improvements proposed for the property for which they are seeking tax exemptions. These are successful businesses, a multi-billion-dollar corporation. I believe they know down to the hundred-dollar level what all these things will be, and it has to be in their projections in order to be as profitable as they are. How much do they calculate the assessment will be on the total of 10 student housing buildings containing 228 units with a total of 696 beds? That's one parcel, or one area. Then there's the 6,400-square-foot Clubhouse Community Center Building, which will be provided as an amenity to the development. And then there's the 3,200-plus-square-foot sanitary sewage treatment building being proposed as part of the project, which will be located at southern end of the property and this, on a separate 80-inch parcel. As lead agency and the planning board, I don't think I could get approval if I had my house with a septic tank on a neighbor's property. So what's that all about? What would you be enabling if you approve it? But right now, I'm focusing on the taxable, ratable of that. By the way, there was no specific mention, that I can find, I'm sure it's in there, of the water treatment. But what's the value of that? Who's going to own it? Who's going to operate it? Who's going to make the profits over the next 46 years? How does that all work? As the lead agency, you're the ones in the best position to help all the taxing authorities and the IDA board know these and get them as early as possible. So the applicants are here tonight. What a perfect time to ask them. Now, I do want to say something about this application to the IDA that I believe was personally disturbing, and it was disturbing to many of the folks who live here in New Paltz that I know. The applicant notified the IDA last week that it would not be seeking tax exemptions for the three faculty-staff housing buildings containing a total of 24 to 30 units. The reason given was that the applicant now believes that faculty and staff residents will indeed have families who will attend our local schools. Now, this represents a total reversal from their claim over the past three years that these faculty units would have no impact on the central school district. So how much credence can we give to many of their other claims of no impact if this has been a reversal? If that was the only reversal, mistakes are made, although it's not an organization, Wilmerite, that makes mistakes like that. In the same application and presentation, verbal presentation before the IDA, the applicant also admitted that the SUNY campus police force will not, in fact, be responsible for the protection of Park Point. This, again, has been a claim for three years, written everywhere. It's in the DEI. It's in the financial impact statement. And now we realize the entire burden of site safety and site security will fall on the New Paltz Police Department. Another reversal. Another claim of no financial impact on the town is reversed by the applicant in public. You need to know that. The IDA needs to understand that, and I hope there will be a healthy level of communication between this board and the IDA. They're waiting on your seeker involvement. We all would like to better understand how they systematically, procedurally, get information from you and what that link is. I hope you will work on that, maybe sometime in the future, help the public understand that. I also want to inform the planning board that in support of its application to the Ulster County IDA, the applicant appended the flawed fiscal impact statement with that summer date of July of 2012 that you've already rejected, and you've sent them back to the drawing board. And you've decided to get your own consultants, which the applicant will pay for. How cynical and disingenuous to stand before the IDA board and not mention that they had been told to revise this document, that financial impact statement, and they've been told to reconsider all of their financial impact representations. Why have the IDA waste its time and money laboring over an already discarded and rejected document, only to come to the same conclusions that this board did? And by the way, they will. They will. Most of us were very impressed by going to that meeting. The IDA board is comprised of a group of intelligent individuals, and they are skilled in the evaluation of financial data. These people know their stuff. This action on the part of the applicant doesn't bode well for a healthy partnership relationship with the town, and makes one wonder if this project is really the true public-private partnership portrayed by the applicant, or just another typical real estate development project, which is fine, but it's just seeking higher profits by diverting its fair share of taxes onto the shoulders of local residents. I promised my wife I wouldn't wander, but this is not wandering. I just have to say that I hope, as you consider the financial impact on the seeker, you'll ask yourselves, how many of the 14,000 residents of New Paltz want to partner with these guys? I don't. I don't. Maybe we could all stand up. And I say 14,000 because, obviously, that includes children. But you're making a decision for 25 years that could enable, I doubt that it will, them not to pay their fair share. So you're making our children also inherit this liability. Would you invest in a project, spend your own money, which is what we're being asked to do, because somebody would have to pay for all this if they get their tax exemptions, and then guarantee that you're going to make less? Because that's what we're doing. We're each going to make less, and the school district will make less because of this IDA application. I don't get it, and I don't think you do either, so that's why we're the lead agency looking into this. Finally, I would like to respectfully suggest that the planning board has every right to make any approvals for this project conditional upon the applicant paying its fair share of taxes. Just as you would grant a subdivision or site plan application conditional upon the applicant installing sidewalks, or making other improvements, or drainage changes, or landscaping, you can make your approvals, in this case, conditional upon the applicant meeting certain financial impact representations. How else can you arrive at defensible seeker findings? If the applicant proceeds with no payment in lieu of taxes agreements, no leaseback arrangements, no mortgage tax exemptions, there will be a certain predictable impact on the fiscal environment of this town. We know the town will be getting, and the school district, and even the county, their fair share of $1.5 million. But if they get the tax exemption, that $1.5 million goes away, and maybe there's $116,000 to $200,000. How can you ignore that? You need to know that information, and that's the catch-22 and the chicken and egg. And you have a right to ask every question you want to ask. Nobody ever got in trouble asking questions and listening to the answers. And if your attorney tells you you can't ask something, get another attorney. There are lots of them. I don't think you will, but there are lots of them. I believe your findings, if the applicant does take advantage of the fiscal impact that's different, it's disastrous. So you move from disastrous, hey, pretty good deal. Welcome to town, Tom. Bring your buildings. We'd love it. I think it's a great project, and many people know this, but not if I have to pay for it, my children have to pay, and my grandchildren have to pay for it. This is a significant difference between an annual flow of $1.5 and $200. Any seeker findings from the lead agency have to reflect that, I respectfully suggest. I want to thank you for listening and for your continued efforts on behalf of our town. I do appreciate it.
You going to submit that, Paul?
Yes, I do have a copy for Kelly.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to make a public comment, preferably not some of the most? Okay.
I would.
I want to keep you short, yeah.
I would like to just reiterate what Paul had to say. I think currently the school board is looking to cut positions in order to keep taxes down around a 4% or 5% rate, which is not sustainable. I think as a community, we should insist that the applicants pay their fair share of taxes. They're going to build it regardless, so why not make it contingent upon them paying their taxes like anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We'll close that session on public comment. We'll begin the application reviews. All right, you're up.
Good evening.
Oh, wait.
We actually have not been before the board since last September, so to give you a little bit of an update on what we've been doing since that point in time, the applicant engaged an engineer to do the roadway design and the septic approval. I believe that the engineer was in contact with Mr. Klausert. They were looking to seek a roadway width waiver from the planning board so that the olive lane that's existing doesn't go another 300 feet, six feet wider than the existing olive lane is, to try to keep it sort of looking like an existing rural-type roadway. So I don't know whether I need to do that as a formal. I had submitted the letters regarding the other waivers that we requested, and I wasn't exactly sure how to handle the roadway one.
Just wanted to talk about what's going to happen on the lots, and if there's any no further subdivision or... The roadway out there right now is about 20 feet.
Yep.
And the town standards are much wider than that. And the question is to go ahead and stay with that 20 feet, which that would work as long as there was nothing else that was going to happen over there. But if that more development was going to come, it might have a larger, or is a regular withdrawal, it might make some sense.
Right. We stipulated a note on the map, note number 12, no further subdivision of the lands of Vlamos from the cul-de-sac of Olive Lane shall be permitted. So lands of Vlamos, if they ever do any further development, which they don't have planned, they would have to find alternate access to do so.
But what's going on in the adjacent property?
Yeah. I also submitted a copy of the tax map showing the lands that are left of Anchure, and basically, you know, the property in question that we're subdividing the lot off of, and I apologize that I don't have more copies of this, the road is extending here, and we're creating a lot sort of shaped like that. As you can see, the property is significantly encumbered by a Central Hudson easement going through the center of it, and then, in addition, wetlands in three different locations on the property. Right now, there are six dwelling units that are in the multifamily that's there now. So we would need a minimum of six acres with that just to accommodate it. So the likelihood of further development in that parcel, because of the Central Hudson easement and the wetlands and the width of it, is significantly limited.
Oh, you're not going to argue with, I'm not going to argue with me on that. I've known that for years. He hasn't been able to develop the land because Roma Place is a private road, and he needs two.
Yeah, and even if he were to come in off of Roma, somehow, he's got the wetlands to contend with and the Central Hudson easement to contend with. So any potential development on that is environmentally and physically constrained.
Well, is there a problem? Can he give me as a statement saying he has no intention to further develop this?
No, I don't think he'll ever get that statement out of there.
Right. I tried.
I can tell you right now, he's had that for the last, oh, it's better than 40 years thought process of developing that piece, because he developed this whole area to begin with.
Yeah, he owned this entire development.
To continue there, but back then, even they told him they needed two entrances and exits, and as you can see, it only has one. And since that time, as pointed out by Patty, there is significant wetlands back there, and there's a made-in-right-of-way for the transmission line. The Central Hudson cuts right through that piece of property.
That lot is a part of the subdivision, though.
Yeah.
He has an owner that has to sign.
Correct.
An application.
So I think that to the extent that, you know, about his signature's on the map, he acknowledges that we're leaving it at 20 foot. We probably put a note on if any further development in this area, we'd have to bring it up to code.
That certainly would be a compromise that would be acceptable to my applicant, who's actually the one constructing the road right now.
A little unclear why they would spend the money for the cul-de-sac, for the road at all, and whether the town would take the road.
Mr. Vlamos is aware of the fact that in order for his daughter to be in close proximity to him, and he needs to subdivide this parcel, in order to subdivide the parcel, he needs to conform to the town requirements, and the town requirements are building a road. And if that's what it takes, then that's what he's doing. It's Mr. Vlamos who's paying for the road to be extended so his daughter can construct a home there.
Have you asked the highway superintendent if he has any issues or concerns?
No, I thought that we needed to come back before this board first because we hadn't discussed it at all, and, you know, certain...
Some of the scruples.
Yeah, it takes one half dozen of another way to go, but...
We did refer to the fire department for their comments, which we have not received yet. You know, I'm sure they meet only once a month or whatever, so we haven't gotten back. We have not heard back from them.
We started a letter on this mic, but we didn't have the drainage or the road designed, so we didn't go any further with it. The road is kind of a key here.
Yeah. I guess the question I have is, and I guess you have it, is that what we're building for an end of the road?
We want to ask Chris to make sure that he's not after a hammerhead instead of a...
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, what the latest with the highway superintendent is on what they want for the end of the road.
It's actually changed on a couple now, so I'm not sure where he answered.
Oh, okay. So should I? I did receive, and which I can give you this copy if I'm allowed to give it to Dave tonight, the proposed olive lane extension. The engineer did supply that to me this week, so I will be able to give that to Dave. And then with the board's permission, I can forward copies of both the subdivision map and the road plan to the highway superintendent and suggest that perhaps he can curve or have a discussion with Mr. Klausert regarding that. Is that, okay. I just, I wanted, I don't want to be overstepping my...
No, no. It's, we got a, one of the questions that always comes up is how do we end the road? And it changes from highway superintendent to superintendent, some like hammerhead, some like circles.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that highway superintendent signs off on that road extension.
Of course, the fire department will.
Of course. Well, sufficient on that one.
Yeah, we just sent that to them on January 22nd, so I expect to hear back from them shortly, you know, the way their meeting schedule runs.
Lyle, any comments, questions?
It just seems to me that once they move the house to the other side of the lot, that it would make more sense to just have a driveway out to the street instead of putting the whole street in.
We're not allowed to because the lot has to have a minimum, yeah. No floodlots.
We're just creating this impervious surface.
That's what we're trying to minimize it to the greatest extent possible.
I mean, I know on some other project, we went for a 35-foot radius on the turnaround on the end instead of 50, just to save that.
Yep.
You know, I don't know what the fire company is wanting now, but...
What is it, 50 feet?
This is 100 feet across the now, so it's 50-foot radius.
50-foot radius.
For the outside.
So I think in, I don't know.
They should be able to go 50 feet.
The question is, can you drop it to 35, was what you asked.
You know, you...
With a small truck?
Yes, small truck.
I mean, certainly, any radius that we have there now will improve the situation because right now you have six multifamilies back there with very, very limited access.
Yes.
So certainly, this is going to be an improvement, and part of the reason, I think, maybe, Lyle, for even putting the road in is it is going to be improving a pre-existing situation where maybe access isn't as desirable as it should be, given the number of residential structures back there already.
In your note with this plan, you said something about a curtain drain.
Mm-hmm.
Now, because the contours aren't complete, it's sort of hard to see where that would lead to.
Yeah, there is an existing low area in the northeast corner of the property, which is why the contour's sort of in there. This is a depression that Mr. Klausert had pointed out at our first meeting. So we basically moved the house and the septic area to the higher part of the property, and the curtain drain goes around this so that the water will be collecting in the low area.
Now, is this low to the adjacent properties, Ulster?
Yes. It's a depression in the middle of the...
Now, if, you know, if they extend the street down there, what are you going to do about the utilities?
We have sent...
Are you going to put them underground?
We sent a letter to Central Hudson already because there is the potential of needing to relocate that pole 12119 if we don't get the waiver to make the road less wide, and if we need to center the road within that 50-foot strip. So right now, because there's already the overhead, this is a Central Hudson pole, and this is a Central Hudson pole. This one, we're looking to relocate, shift slightly. From here, the utilities go underground to this house, and then will go underground to this house.
Now, is this a multifamily?
They both are. I believe this is a two-family and a four-family, if I'm not mistaken.
Now, this tree, I went out there today, that's a pretty large, apparently good-shaped tree.
That's why we're...
I would hate to see the road...
Right. That's why we're proposing, that's why that will stay.
Move that over, maybe they could swing around, or I don't know what they could do, but...
Yeah, I think, I think they've got, oh, and, well, yeah, they didn't exactly draft it. The intention is for that tree to stay, which is one of the reasons that we're showing it on there. We're showing the only trees in the septic area.
Probably need to really get almost to the drip line.
Move the driveway.
Yes. To make a difference.
Yep. Because, again, remember that this is a, what is it, a 50 scale?
No. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a 50 scale. So this tree on here right now, we're showing it about a drip line of 15 feet, might be a little bit more than that, but...
I think it's a lot more than that. When I looked at it, it was about a 30-inch BBH, so I would say the tree was probably 30 or 35 feet.
There are some beautiful, yes.
Well, how many trees are you planning to take down?
One, two, three, four of them.
Those are the ones in here?
Yep.
This one?
One, two, three. Oh, these are in the reserve area, so actually, we don't have to take them down. So one, two, that one, I'm going to say, we'll probably have to come down, and that one may.
What kind of trees are those?
I thought he had labeled them on there, but I see that they're not, so I'll get them labeled. Okay.
That big one might be a sycamore. I'm not sure. It's getting dark.
I can't recall. Peter, any other questions? Okay. Tom?
We did submit the copy of the board of health approval, which they did receive.
Tim?
No questions.
I think we addressed the majority of the questions that we had from the last.
So this is going to be a pretty high bank here on this road. Let me see, three, ninety-six, down to thirty-two, thirty-one. We have contours here.
Yeah, it's not, they're not really showing on that profile, they're not showing substantial regreting.
Hard to imagine.
I don't remember too much, it really just turned into a big, long driveway.
For you, Dave.
Third type of driveway, a whole way outside. Well, I think my point, I guess the big issue here is to get between Dave and the highway superintendent and what we can do on this, what we can do on this road, what's acceptable from the fire department, from the highway department for it, I mean, if he.
Four and a half feet.
If he's acceptable to a twenty-foot width, we can probably take that into consideration, but need back from them.
And then it'll also be with regard to the highway superintendent, whether he wants us to stay with the cul-de-sac or change it to a T, right?
Right, whatever shape and whether he wants thirty-five or fifty, again, we're, you know, we'll propose the fifty, but done, we've.
If you can get thirty-five.
If we can get thirty-five and the fire department's okay with thirty-five, we could probably go along with that, but again, there isn't. Back there, and that's been privately thought anyway, so I'm just making out loud, I think that's the key, that you got left on this.
Okay. All right, so I'll get the contact information for the highway superintendent from Kelly and we'll move forward in that vein.
I think that's the last one, but then we can put it out for public hearing and with the right road, I don't want to start answering, answering questions in public hearing on the road that we haven't decided yet.
Right, and it's nice just to be able to get back in front of the board again and have some other lingering questions that I can make sure I address before we set it up for the public hearing as well, so.
Okay.
I appreciate the opportunity.
So that's the key.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's see what we got. Road with exemption, type of trees being removed, type of driveway, T or cul-de-sac, yep. All right. Move sign there.
It was, what color do I get, pink or yellow?
Yellow.
Yellow.
Young readable copy.
Be unforgettable, wonderful.
We're going to do that.
Actually, yeah, he pressed real nice, I can read this one perfectly, he's got neat printing too, thank you.
You don't want to get volunteer.
I know, you give him too many. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Basically, all we try to do in the, each is hit the highlights and then really it's a tracking of what issues did we bring up, what are some of the actions or things that they still have to do. So we know and they know we're on the same page when we finish it up, it isn't a dissertation of the minutes or anything else like that, but just, so when they leave, they say, okay, they want this, 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 and this. So that's what we try to do with a tracking sheet.
Why does your air machine stick to that?
Okay. Yeah, okay, so we're, well, some don't. Okay. So if Mike ever stops talking, we can bring up Wilmer, right, but I know it's one of the challenges we have in business here. Yep.
A whole bunch of stuff going on with Patty, so I'm trying to get it done.
Do it on your time.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm not getting in the middle of that one, not me. Okay. Welcome back, it's like I never left and you're still here.
Did you miss us?
Yeah, I did not, I tell you.
I liked the plaque.
All right. I think a couple of things, I sent out the, to the board, the information on the table of contents that was submitted to me and the sixty-one pages of questions and documentation that we received through both the public hearings and the written comments. I hope you all at least got it.
I don't think I did.
What is it? Was it supposed to be me named?
How was it named?
I don't remember why it named it.
Well.
I will look again.
I'll go back and look in my email, I didn't, I didn't find anything, but.
Kelly, you got it?
Yes, I did, yes.
What?
That guy.
Yeah.
Did you know which was?
Just check, check the, well, send it out again to the board members.
Share one. Yeah, we can. Share another.
Yeah, the one, one document is, is a free page, basically a table of comments on the, what an FEIS would look like and then basically the other sixty-three page document is a, as you can see, a summary of the questions and comments that were raised.
Do you want us to sort of walk through this at all for everybody?
Yes.
Would you like to start with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we did as a follow-up to all the public comment and the written comment and the transcripts, everything else that was collected, both written to the, directed to the planning board and transcribed from the public hearings, was then organized in the fashion that we discussed a couple of meetings ago, that Dave Klausor reviewed and gave us some direction and guidance on how to, you know, organize. So the first page was a table of contents, which is sections A through T and corresponds with all those comments under those categories, so for example soils, geology, topography, surface water, groundwater, et cetera, et cetera. And so we organized all the public comments under those headings and then the corresponding comments response document itself, which will be the format for the FEIS, is organized to correspond with that, obviously. So we listed every person that made comment, every written comment and corresponding to that section of soil contamination. We broke them up as well, you know, it might have been the same person, obviously discussing a couple of things and we make sure they were cited both places. In addition to that, we are, we're going to submit a comment or document matrix, which lists every person or interested involved agency that supplied comment to the, you know, to the applicant, to us, and it corresponds with each section, so sections A through R. So you'll actually have a, right here, you'll have a spreadsheet essentially that will show every comment that was made and under what section that individual had entered or had a comment, so.
Can we get this over?
Yeah, this will all.
No, we haven't got this yet.
We haven't got this yet, no, because we're still organizing all of this, you know, this is, we're still obviously in the process of organizing all the comments, but this is basically going to be a chart for every person, every comment they made and where their comments fell under what category. So it's an easy reference for the planning board to, to ensure that comments were documented and were, and then our responses are, will be a single response to the entire section of whatever that might be, so contamination, we'll make a, we'll make a single response to all of those comments. And what you have in front of you is basically that sixty-three pages is the consolidated public comment.
Well, yeah, what we did was we actually used the quotes out of their comments rather than try to paraphrase or, or beat someone's mind a little bit, the thought process there, I've been through it a couple of times where individuals don't think that we answered their comment because our paraphrasing of the question, if you will, under a different type of format may not have encompassed all their thoughts. So we tried to, in the past, we found it better to just give the, you know, give the quotes, direct language as we could, sometimes with respect to the public hearings, you can't always do that, you're going to have to kind of glean something out of folks as they kind of change subjects and go all over the place, but, but we did identify, we tried to identify every person and you'll see the same people made same comments, maybe in written form, public hearing, another written form or whatever, even though it's a kind of a repetitive nature, we did give them, we did identify and put them in the document such that yet they're recognized for every time they did comment.
So the number in the, next to a person's name is just.
The number next to person's name corresponds to a number that Kelly assigned for each piece of correspondence that came in, so.
So the first person to comment that has a one next to that.
So number one might be Janet or, you know, whoever that person may be, based on, you also have as part of the documents, you'll have all those, that correspondence as well.
There's two different, quickly to clarify, I think what you're asking, there's two different parts, there's obviously the written comment that has a number designated by the town board, by, by town secretary, and then there are also written, I'm sorry, but oral comments in the public hearing and those, those markings will be listed as the night that they were, I think it was A, B, C, or D, were the nights that we had public hearings and then the page was in that transcript. So it would be, you know, B-121 is the second night of public hearing, page 121 is where you'll find that comment, okay? And we, and we're also submitting sort of an introduction to this too to explain, you know, how this is all referenced and how it all, you know, is supposed to be reviewed.
Is this document available on the internet now?
No.
No, it's not. Okay.
We can email it to you and send it to you if you want.
Okay.
I mean, it's something we circulated.
Yeah, Kelly, we, we'll send it back out again.
Yeah, we circulated.
Yeah, I checked, it was the one that was sent on the nineteenth of February.
Okay.
Okay, two, nineteen, thirteen.
But the format was something that we circulated, you know, previous, a couple of previous meetings.
So we just wanted to make sure you were all aligned, word with the format.
We'll try to do a better job, okay? Sorry, if we get mumbling, if we, if they are mumbling, just let me know, thank you. So at least we have, I think we're at the beginning stage, is we have the comments that were raised in public hearing, written comments, we've identified them, we categorized them into the areas of the report and now the challenges to, to address those comments and how to respond to them, that would be the final environmental impact statement and which you're working on as we, even as we speak.
That's correct.
We've also submitted all the.
Sure.
A little question though, you, you say that the responses to the comments will constitute the final environmental impact statement, but there was a lot of stuff in the DEIS that wasn't necessarily commented on, will that disappear or where, where does that go?
No, I, I.
And.
You want to do it? Okay.
There's two things you do when you prepare the FEIS, one is you respond to comments and the second is you revise or modify the draft DEIS as necessary to become the FEIS that will be your document.
Because I was wondering if, if there have been changes that you've proposed even while comments are being made and will they be reflected in the final document?
Well, I, you know, I guess glad we're having this discussion because my, my intent was we'll just respond to the comments, number one, number two, sometimes we'll reference the DEIS if there's more information on that subject that's still valid, it would just be referenced in the, the document that is the response to the comments that, in my mind, is the FEIS. Three, if there's a variation from the information in the DEIS because of additional information or whatever, we would just make that differentiation in our responses, we hadn't planned on going back and changing the DEIS itself to a, to update it, so to speak.
I don't think you need to go over the entire DEIS, for example, there's a, in the DEIS itself, it talks about separate parcel being created for the sewer plant parcel. The subdivision plan actually shows.
Combined.
That being combined, so you'll clarify.
Sure.
Very points, those kind of things.
Yeah, definitely.
And the board, the board will also look it over.
Sure.
And clarify what it feels needs to be.
Yeah, absolutely, it's your document.
Well, one of the things.
George also, I, one of the things George pointed out to me too a little while ago and we're going to work on that, I've talked to Doug and to Tom about it, is sometimes wording, different wordsmithing would be more appropriate for the board. For instance, a couple of times where the document said to maximum extent practicable, George, you know, said even though that language is considered appropriate and seeker, the board may wish to see that more clearly clarified, you know, clarified in the document, that's, things like that, so.
Well, let me back up a minute because I'm uncomfortable with the approach that requires a person reviewing the document to sit with three separate documents. He's going to sit, read the DEIS, refer to another section of comments that were raised on it, maybe another document that enhances it. I'm concerned about it, I'd like, truthfully for me, I would like the FEIS to stand on itself, to tell the whole story. If that means cutting and pasting and pulling out of the DEIS sections on it, followed by comments, followed by explanations of clarifications and additional detail, I think it's, it's a document that although longer, is better handled by people and better to stand on itself. The idea that now everybody would have to go back to the DEIS to find information and look at the comments and then look at the conclusions or mitigations or results that you answered that, to me is, they just makes it more complicated. I don't know how the board reels, but that's where I would want to see it all together as a standalone.
Yeah, I completely agree, I, I would like to have the DEIS be something that we never look at again, just in that, the FEIS should be, you know, a reconfigured DEIS with the public comments, the responses, anything that was unclear in the DEIS, because I think it's, you know, the, the DEIS alone without the attachments and the addendums is only five hundred pages, so I'm thinking the FEIS has, and I've heard comments where the FEIS was going to be a shorter document and that didn't seem intuitive to me because it seems like it should be much longer than the DEIS.
Typically, what happens with the FEIS is that the, all of those other documents, meaning the public comments, all of the transcripts, if you will, which, this is, all get made part of that FEIS, they're all appended to it and the FEIS typically gets, I think what Mike is saying, gets rewritten as a standalone. I've seen it both ways, it is to go back and look at the other document, can be confusing, there's some utility in it in some instances, but, you know, whatever the board's preference, I think is what we will do and then typically the finding statement is much shorter.
Oh, finding statement is a summation of everything.
Much, much shorter, but the FEIS is typically a big stack of stuff.
It seems to me like the, the table of contents that we use for the DEIS should, you know, be compared to the table of contents that we just addressed here and if there's, you know, a section on soils in the DEIS, the public comments should come within that within that, you know, that same section. It should be cut and pasted, as George suggested, right into one document.
I would, the only thing I would go along with is that all the appendices to the DEIS could remain appendices outside. I would not attach necessarily, I mean, the studies that they submitted previously in the DEIS can be referenced, and one could go back and look at the study again. But I really think it's a read-through. You see the issue, you see what, we're talking about soil contamination, you see the comments that were raised on it, you see the response and mitigation.
Where you think, I don't know.
It may be a thousand pager, it may be like Gone with the Wind. But it's easier to follow.
But what about just some sort of like way to like track changes? And if you have the DIS and you're cutting and pasting questions from the public hearings and then the response to those questions, and then that's even in, if there's an amended or an addendum to the DIS, then, oh, well, this was added to answer specific questions that were raised. You know, so if it's regarding a certain topic, it's all in there, and then you could identify what was originally in there and then what has been added recently. So you can truly track what has changed and what has been answered.
I think that, in itself, at least to me, is, could be very difficult to follow because there's a lot of things in the DEIS that should really get tossed. It shouldn't even cloud your thought going forward. It was poorly written, it didn't address the subject as we found out in a number of different areas, and that the FEIS should address the subject, address the comments, and come up with the conclusions or mitigation.
Well, I'd love to see if you think there were things in the DEIS that should be removed or were poorly written, and the applicant agrees, why can't we keep it in and those things are just marked through so that we know that they've been removed? So we can see the true progression, so we have one working document.
Well, again, from my point of view... My point of view is the FEIS stands on itself. What's in there is what we agree to and what's written. And it doesn't really need additional verbiage in there that we're basically striking out.
I totally agree. I don't think we're interested in the history of the, how the FEIS got. I mean, we're just interested in what's been, the substantive thing that's being said at the end. I mean, the thing about it.
But, you know, the times where we've gone and updated the DIS to the FEIS, you end up getting backed down, quite frankly, in review because you don't have a clear distinction between what was asked and how it was answered. Now, maybe we're okay here in saying we still do that and then we just continue on with the discussion, but the FEIS truly is answering of questions on the DEIS. That is what it is in a document form. So I just, again, my experience has been, if you try to just, if you try to update the whole big document to turn it from a DIS into an FEIS, you lose, you lose track of the questions that were asked and the answers for those questions. I mean, again, that's just my experience. I want this to go as...
Doesn't, don't all these sections correspond with the FEIS?
They do. We changed the letters just because there were some letters that were...
How do you lose track, if anything?
I think what Michael's suggesting, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong.
I will.
Michael's suggesting, take the DEIS language that you have, rewrite it in the FEIS, and if there's parts that need to change, those are the parts that'll change irrespective of the comments. The comments you're gonna have to respond to too. But there may be things, for instance, that this board, in adopting its findings statement, doesn't agree with the DEIS, and they may say, we need this part changed. Is that what you're saying, Mike?
I'm not even, you know, getting that far. I don't want to lose what Tim says about it. What I was trying to do is, and nor Doug, I think, and maybe if I went too far, I'll backtrack, the DEIS, the document, the section you've written on it already exists.
Yep.
I want to see that, and you gotta write to rephrase it, but then there are questions raised on that. And then they're answered. And if it's a mitigation or something else, it's answered. But it's together. It's not, here's the DEIS, here's my answer. It's in one document. That's basically, so your thought is, where's the history on it? We talked about it. These are the comments raised, and here's what we, here's our response to it. And all I'm trying to do is put that in one document so people don't flip back and forth.
Michael, what do we do with the sections, for instance, where there's, where there were virtually no, there are no public comments, you know, soil types, and, you know, things that are mechanical applications? What do you want to do with that? That's what I think, Doug, that's where you're talking about, the whole bunch of it, that there are no comments, and really no comments from the board.
Just carry them forward.
Okay, that's, that's what we were...
Okay?
That way, the whole thing will be in one piece, and if you're looking at it further, it'll be there.
I'm looking at it. We have three months of review on the one document on it. I just think it will make it difficult for the public to review it if it's in multiple sections because they won't be able to have access to it, or if it's on two discs, putting one up on the screen and swapping back and forth on it.
Your dining room table isn't big enough.
Yeah, okay, that's the other aspect on it, too. Multiple screens or big dining room tables are the hindrance on it. So, again, you're getting the DEIS, and you can take that as your basis. You're putting in the comments associated with that, you're responding to the comments in that, and you're carrying it forward.
Mike, do you want us on the appendices that are part of the DEIS? For instance, the pesticide appendices and stuff. Do you want the FEIS to refer directly to those appendices? Is that...
Yeah.
Typically, that, right, Doug, that's what we usually do.
Yeah. A lot of the appendices will, the appendices will have to change as well. For example, because of the questions on soil contamination, we did a lot more testing, we did a lot more scientific...
Well, you've added to it. You've added another doc, now, if you said, this attachment that we had in the DEIS isn't valid anymore, I want you to use this one.
Or as a supplement.
Or it supplements it.
Or mainly supplement.
It's generally supplement. That goes in the FEIS as an attachment to it. But the original one stays with the DIS otherwise.
So just to be, to be sort of specific here, we've got, you know, a 60-page executive summary, we've got the DEIS body, and then you've got the appendixes. And now we've got questions and comments. Are we saying, go back to the 60-page executive summary, edit that, go to the DEIS, and add in the comments and responses under those sections only? The other sections stay the same? Is that right?
So far, so good.
And then the appendixes stay the same unless they're amended?
Those appendices stay the same and stay with the DEIS. The only, the only appendices you would add to the FEIS are the new ones that you bring into it.
Just see if I'm getting this straight.
If you can repeat it back to me, then...
No, I'm going to, I'm going to, but if you take, if you take the soil section, there were comments raised regarding potential impacts. You've changed the supplement. The DIS has said one thing. It's now saying more and it's saying different to some extent. So if you put that in the rewritten section itself, and then you list the comments below that were relevant to soils, and say, as described in section A, we are now following this protocol. This protocol is more fully described in appendix whatever B, then instead of having to go through an entire reiteration of a comment and an explanation, you're referring to the revised FEIS and the changes that have been made in response and explaining how those address the impact that was, or the issue that was raised at the public hearing. So you talk about soils, you talk about, in the body of the, what will become the FEIS act, the section, and you say, in section A, we described a revised format. And then you don't have to go through, you're identifying the comment, you're identifying the response that's been made in the FEIS itself, and that's, I think, all you need to do.
Well, sometimes to understand a comment, you want to have what they were commenting on, and then you can show how it's been addressed.
My preference would be, edit the DEIS as necessary if things change, but then do the comments and the responses because that really is what you're looking at, is the comments and the responses. I hate to have to spend all this time to categorize all these comments and not do sort of a comment-response type format because that's when, in the past, I've gotten into trouble because people are saying, well, you didn't answer my question. My question was this, and you said that. Well, that isn't what I said. I mean, but if you have it very simply where here's the comments exactly how you said them, and here's the responses that we give, anybody can look at and say, you know, as a planning board, you can look at it and say, well, no, Doug, you didn't answer this question up here specifically as it was asked. If you have these comments, and then you have to go into the body of the DEIS and search for the responses in the bottom, body of the DEIS, that's, I've done that before, and it's been a nightmare, quite frankly. And I don't want to do that again.
Well, I think, this is what I'm, I feel like a few of us have said this, but if there's a soil section from the DEIS, and if there are any changes to that section, you will make that change. And then at the bottom, you're gonna have the Q and A.
That's fine. I just thought, I thought George was saying, don't do the Q and A.
No, we definitely...
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the comment.
Try it again, George.
I get what Tim's saying.
I'll go with what Doug's doing. You respond to, you identify the issue or the comment, you respond to it, and then you change the text of the FEIS to explain how, explain the impact, the proposed mitigation, and that follows forward into conditions of approval if necessary.
Again, from my point of view, that would allow it to stand on its own.
How about we circulate, let's take soils for a sample. Let's, you know, this week, work on a example of what we're thinking about doing here. Circulate it to you guys, and you guys can send comment back to us via email in the meantime. So we, so we at least all agree to the format?
Yeah. Again, I just...
Yeah, you know, Mike was suggesting that we go through sections, piece by piece, maybe we could kind of combine yet a little bit.
Yeah.
Where we do one section or whatever, do it in the format and the response, then go back in, do two things. One is just review the format with the board, and two, tackle that subject if it's possible. You need to maintain some momentum.
Right, that's true. I think that's, and again, all I want to come out is, public are gonna look at the document, they're gonna pick it up, I want them to be able to sit there, read the document, and understand what the issue is, what the comments were raised on it, and what the answers and responses to those comments. And that we have enough in the body of that FEIS to write up a findings statement on that category.
And that would probably be better anyways, as we are getting through each section, that actually gets us through those sections now because we're in a justice format. As they're done, we'll send them off for review, and then when we come and meet the next meeting, we can go through all those and hopefully get through this, that ultimately, at the end of the day, we've reviewed all those drafts, you guys have made comments, we've taken those into consideration, and then our final, final, you know, FEIS will be, already been completely reviewed, essentially.
Are we, are we going to just do one section first so we can see what the format is?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that first, absolutely. Yeah, and I think we can do that in the next couple of days.
I think this week, if they can turn it around, I'll get that out, we'll get that out right to you, but then I'd also like to, you know, get an idea of what other ones could follow up.
Yeah, we'll take a section that we think we pretty much already have all the work done as it relates to comments and everything, all the other additional work.
I'll try to go to some point. It's not gonna be a pilot, I can tell you that.
Don't, don't, send me the pilot.
Geology.
I knew that was gonna be said, I didn't think it was gonna be said by Doug.
Yeah. No, I think it enables us, from a board perspective, not to get a thousand pager and sit down and say, well, is it complete? Is it reviewed? Is it ready for the public? The more we can do upfront, the better it is going through the document. So then when it's finally completed, we can say that we've reviewed, you know, it and we're ready, rather than getting it all at once.
Does that make sense?
But, again, from a board perspective, I want it to make sense that we've reviewed it, we've seen that we've been responsive to the comments on it, and it's ready to go out to the public for review. It's not your decision, you're not finalizing it, you're not putting your rubber stamp on it there. You're just saying that they responded to the comments, it's addressed, the issues that were raised have been addressed. It's time to go out and have the public review it. And that's all we'll be doing because they'll come back to us after the public comments on it. I think that, that works.
Hey, I'd just be curious, you know, where the, you know, what the applicant is thinking now in terms of like some of the questions that were raised by citizens at the IDA board, in terms of, like if we're going down this path and, you know, you guys are actively pursuing a project, you know, what happens in, you know, as you stated, is you feel you do not have a project without a pilot. So, you know, how do you kind of balance the risk of not getting a pilot or not getting enough of a pilot where your project does or doesn't make sense? I mean, how do you kind of weigh those risks while you're pursuing all this?
We weigh them a lot. I don't know. We have to continue down this process and answer the questions from both this board first, address their questions and concerns, yours, and then obviously address and issue any questions from the IDA board. And at the end, we need to, you know, make a determination of what we can, you know, what we can, you know, develop ultimately as a final project. So, we need to see what the mitigation findings are for this, determine what the cost implications of those are or might be, and what the ultimate final pilot is. So, again, we've always had that conversation. We're not sure until we, it's the same chicken and the egg conversation everyone wants to have, is it, you should do this first or you should do that first? And everywhere we go, we ask that.
The lawyers always jump in here, but Seeker requires us to complete the Seeker process before we can get a decision on a pilot. That's how it works, so.
Before we go any further into that, one of the things I did send out, and I could ask Dave to kind of lead us through it, but we did draft up, or Dave did draft up, I shouldn't say, wait, Dave did draft up a RFP for fiscal analysis. I will point out that getting the numbers, getting what the cost of services are to the town has been a struggle. Mainly maybe the questions aren't asked right, or the town is reluctant to supply that, but the numbers exist, and it looks like we'll have to pursue getting some of the numbers from the town budget in order to do this. But we have a proposal on the table to look for a fiscal consultant to do the analysis of the fiscal impacts of the project, and also the benefits, costs and benefits of it. Dave, I'll just let you wind through it.
Okay. I'd say go to page six. Go right to the scope of the work. The first part there, the task number one, is information review, data collection, and development of unit costs. We're asking the consultant to review the park point scoping document, the DEIS appendix H, the Camoin final report. Review those methodologies to make, to make sure that they're, they follow the scoping document and there's accurate assumptions there. The third one is, talks about the pilot, to review that, is a dormitory classification pilot agreement. Review the town budget. And interview... And interview department heads to be able to get the real, the cost. Interview the department heads to be able to also find out anything that's coming up that might not be shown in the budget. Say that fire truck that's a couple of years out, or whatever. Just so we know that we haven't got a budget that we're looking at that's lower than usual or higher than usual. Meet with the town assessor to get the projection of the tax assessment for Park Point when fully occupied. And that's going to be used as kind of a baseline comparison. Meet with the community services, department heads to compile a total cost of services. Interview the community service department heads to estimate the additional staffing that might be there, or equipment. And then from that, develop unit cost of services. Cost per response call for police, fire services, and emergency ambulance services. Quantify the total cost of new staffing requirements and salaries, benefits, equipment needs. Estimate the town's unit cost per resident based on the current town expenditures to provide and maintain recreational facilities that aren't being provided by the development. And establish that cost per pupil with the school district for educating any school-aged children. The task two was trying to develop the projections. So we're, we're coming up with unit costs for police, fire services, and rescue squad. And then we are going to take that by the number of new residents that will occupy Park Point. Describe what factors were used in establishing the selected per-call rates, campus call rate, off-campus call rate, community call rate. So we're looking at, trying to look at all of those factors to see if there's any similarities there, or what the variations are. Establish a necessary additional cost of community services based on the cost of projected increased staffing salaries. This is from the department heads. If there's increased staffing required, that's another way of looking at what those costs might be. Establish the recreation costs by the average cost of recreation per community resident. And then also, project a number of school-aged children that would be in the development. And there's some pretty easy factors to do that. And then develop this, task three is developing the baseline community service cost. We want to, in this section, be able to come up with that cost at the time the development happens, and then be able to adjust it for escalation or any things that weren't considered that happened. Taxes go up, something comes up that you see a real change in the budget that wasn't anticipated to set that rate. We're trying to, to move the pilot cost, as it were, along with whatever happens after it's established. So it'll track the town cost. And the whole thing is to make sure that there's no, that the project pays for the cost of the community services.
I will point out that-
Is there nothing about the effect of having so many rental units available that aren't paying the same kind of property taxes that other existing rental units are paying?
I think you have, I mean, you have a property that's owned by a tax-exempt. So for me, it's hard to work that backwards. And what would the, what's the tax potential on that property? Tax potential is zero.
But is the, is the question something along the lines of, so if we're adding additional supply, and let's say, you know, it costs X number of dollars per room in New Paltz, we're adding additional supply, shouldn't the price of the room go down by some factor? And then shouldn't that then affect the value of rental properties in the village of New Paltz? And potentially change assessed values for property? Because then properties could potentially sell for less moving forward because the rental income potential is lower.
I wish I knew how to put that into a formula, but wow, I don't. I mean, that's more of a-
Seems like we could construct a question and see if the financial consultant could come up with an assumption.
Well, it goes back, it goes back to your, your original premise that the addition of, of supply, is it to meet excessive demand? Is it to balance supply and demand? Is it going to be more than there is a demand for it? In your case, and in the way you presented that, you said this additional supply will create less demand because there isn't any demand for this service in the town. And therefore, then you take your scenario and go further. There are more rental units, rental properties go down, assessments go down, taxes go down. That all goes back to the premise that supply is in excess of what the demand is for the service.
Well, we can just use the, the numbers that the applicant's using. The applicant is assuming 1%. I think, you know, some other folks in the, in the village in the town are saying that the vacancy rate is, is closer to 3% or greater. So you could just run models based on 1% or 3% or 7% and just see what they, they work out to be.
Oh, you're going to propose a vacancy rate? This wouldn't, right, just adding the supply to it, we would then come up to some other vacancy rate than, than we have now. And go from one to the other. And would that have an impact going forward?
What you could do is ask the app, the analyst to do an initial qualitative evaluation of the points that have been raised about vacancy rate. And look at vacancy rates and see if there is need for further analysis. Because to go, my understanding of the process is, to go and do a detailed analysis that will show you what the market is for different kinds of housing units requires a lot of knowledge about the market.
I think we've kind of flogged that dead horse. I mean, you know, the applicant feels it's 1%, others feel it's a little higher. I have, I would like to know what it, what these, what the supply numbers would feel like at 1%, you know, if we assume 1%. I'd like to know if we did it at 3%. It's just assumptions, and we can just look at the, look at it along the continuum. We don't have to do, like, analysis to see whether it's truly 1% or truly 3%.
No, I'm saying more in terms of what it is that's involved. If you have different quality units, and there's a lot of them that are available, and you go for less rent, and you're offering a different, you know, to a different market. So to have, to have the consultant look at the general issue and say, "This is something where we can easily answer the question, or these are obvious facts," might be a good way to get a sense of what, what kind of issue you have.
No, well, let's, let's, let's see about putting something in there about-
You can, you can talk to the, the guys who have all the rental properties in town, and they'll say that, you know, a crappy student housing place will go for $500 a bedroom, and a better one will go for $700. And, you know, this stuff is supposed to be slightly better. So, you know, maybe you'd run the numbers assuming that it's, you know, closer to $700 a bedroom.
Let's explore that. What can we-
But we don't, but I, I think, to your question, George, we don't really know what the mix is in the village of, of the $500 rooms and the $700 rooms. No one probably has done that study.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I have to step back a step and ask Dave what he meant when he was saying he couldn't figure out how to deal with the loss in taxes on a property that would be tax-exempt because it's owned, the land is owned by a tax-exempt organization. Because, you know, Columbia University, for years, owned Rockefeller Center. The land Rockefeller Center was built on. But I'm sure that taxes were paid on those buildings. Where does the tax-exempt nature of the land carry on to the tax-exempt nature of the buildings that are built by a non-tax-exempt company?
If they're used for the tax-exempt purpose, either by the owner or by the entity through some form of contract, then they can be exempt. It depends, it's a factual determination that's made on a case-by-case basis. If a church builds a church, the church is exempt. It owns the land, and it uses that structure for that purpose. If it operates a daycare center, it's not quite as clear, but it can be, in many cases, an argument to be given. It's also exempt, because it's helping fulfill the church mission. So it's, it's-
But it's the church building the daycare center. It's not the church allowing a for-profit daycare center to build a daycare center and make a profit.
It gets more tenuous in those cases.
So how can that be clarified?
It's really, it's the public, it's the public purpose is what drives that issue, as opposed to who the entity is that's directing, that's building it. It is, the essential question is, is a facility used for a public purpose? That's, that's the essential question.
Is it whether it's for profit?
Not whether or not it's for profit.
Well, suppose a church puts a 7-Eleven on, rents out, some of its parking lot to a 7-Eleven.
It depends. But it would not be the same, that's not, qualitatively, that's not even close to the same as offering dormitory rooms, if you will, for a public educational purpose. That's, you know.
We're not going to solve-
I think George, George is right, there's been a slew of cases.
On whether it will be tax-exempt, or whether it will be eligible for IDA, and to what extent that is. All I'm trying to do at this stage of the game is get a valid fiscal analysis of the cost of services that this facility, Park Point, would impose on the town, on a school, and on a county.
And I think Philin's question, though, is, you know, how it could potentially affect our, our local tax base. I think that's basically the crux of her question.
Whether it's in the tax base or not, I'm not sure.
Well, just by, by, by having this project, it will affect our tax base.
Yes.
So, our tax base in terms of the existing taxpayers. You know, will their properties be assessed for more? Because New Paltz is a greater community now, because the college is a stronger entity? Or will the, the, you know, the existing properties be worth less because now they're dealing with the headwind of a larger competitor who can rent out rooms for less than the existing landlords can?
I don't have any problem with what you've just stated. I'm just sure from a, whether anybody could answer that question definitively.
I don't, I don't think we're expecting a definitive answer.
Can I read something from, when the 1996 changes for the secret law were made, some of these issues were discussed, and the law itself was changed. When they did the changes to the law, they prepared what they call the generic environmental impact statement for the law itself. Let me just read you what the, that generic environmental impact statement says about the issues that you're talking about, if you wouldn't mind. "The scope must include such relevant issues as substantive: impacts on property, town, county taxes, sewer taxes, water taxes, water treatment taxes, impact on property values and any tax increase due to subsidy of the project, loss of unique character, loss of jobs, closure of businesses." That's the comment, it's not the answer. Also, this, also should discuss community's need for the project. Sorry, that was the end of the comment right there. Here's the response. "An EIS is required to discuss the potential significant adverse environmental impact from a proposed project. Most of the items listed above constitute an economic fiscal impacts which are not within the purview of Seeker. Impacts to community character should be discussed if determined to be relevant and significant for a project under review. A discussion of the need of the project has been a required component in the EIS since 1978 version of regulations. It was clarified in the 1987 version of Seeker to meet public need. This provision has not changed." I, I, you know, sorry, sorry to get up-
But I think what that's saying is that, fine, we're not required, or you're not required to answer these questions for the EIS.
Yep.
But I think we need this information if we're going to share information with the IDA, who's going to rule on a pilot. So they really have nothing to do with each other.
Okay. Then why are we answering them in the FEIS versus just a pilot?
Well, then don't put it in the FEIS.
Then just a pilot negotiation.
Just provide us the information, and we'll share it with the rest of the people.
I just, I just think this thing of evaluating other people's property value, and I, probably Mike can go more just than I.
Dougie, I intend to answer some of the questions that have been proposed with exactly that response.
Yeah, I mean, I just-
I've intended that for a while.
Yeah, it's just that you're talking about competitive nature among businesses, and everyone has to consider their own property values, and their, their own value of their property, their own, if, in this case, the lease amounts and all that kind of thing. It's for each individual to, to determine on their own, depending on whatever circumstances they are. You've got, on one hand, you've got a lot of people out there that have been living here and have a certain situation that they're basing their, their leases on. On the other hand, you have a new project that's requiring putting all the infrastructure in, sewage and water treatment, et cetera. And that's just, those are just facts. Well, there's, there's a financial situation with both of them. But one is not necessarily the business of the other, quite frankly. You know, you're in a, Wilmerite is in the job of, of building projects and charging a reasonable rate and making a reasonable amount of profit on it, just like everybody else is. And Seeker was not intended to be an exhaustive review of the financial impact on community members that results from that.
But, so, fine, we don't, we don't include it in the FEIS, but we need it to respond to the issue.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just does, just, it may be a dumb question, but I'm just going to ask it anyway. If Wilmerite owned the property, and soon it was going to build the dorms, would they be tax-exempt?
I don't think, no. Well, the dorms wouldn't be, the property might be. Mike, Mike.
I think they would be.
They would all be all tax-exempt.
I think it, I think it would be tax-exempt.
I just want to get back to Tim's question and then roll off. I don't, I have no problem with doing a vacancy. I think what you're asking now is, I'll, I'll use an expression. Somebody wants to come in and open up a gas station in town. What is that one? Quick, blue, whatever that-
Quick check.
Quick check, and then when's the roll of a Kingston? And it involves a fiscal impact or an analysis on it. Is it going to cost or anything else? In that, you evaluate, we don't, I should say, we, we don't evaluate the competitive nature of the effect on the other, of the gas station.
Of course we would not, but this is a different situation. The IDA is relying on us to provide information-
I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about-
About the project to them, so they can figure out whether this project deems a pilot or not.
They, and again-
That's what they've asked us for.
We will, I think we can do the fiscal analysis on it. We can take a look at the impact.
But I think, to your point, absolutely. If, if, if Quick Check wants to come in and build something, and, you know, competitive landscape, they should be allowed to compete with, you know, the other smaller gas stations, you know, provided that Quick Check is building within the code. But is Quick Check pursuing a pilot?
If they were eligible for it? If they were eligible to get their mortgage tax exempt. See, they're eligible, I don't know, maybe there's, there's a rule out there. They're eligible, it's like anything else.
Any, any business is going to look for the assistance that's available to them.
That's all that is.
The pilot's put together for a reason, to spur economic development. And that, that was the whole reason for the, the whole industrial development agency-
Absolutely.
-prepar, and all that kind of thing. So economic development is-
And the dialogue of, of, you know, the IDA is relying on our municipality to respond to whether- to whether we believe it's going to put an additional pressure on our services.
Well, we're going to identify what our cost of services will be.
Regardless of whether you consider it something that goes to the FEIS, the fiscal analyst can be requested to address it in the format that the IDA wants as well, providing his report to you. So that he's, but there, straight up economic benefit or disadvantage is not the province of Seeker. But the secondary impact of those issues can be. It can affect community character, it can affect community services. There are, there are ways that it's tied in. So it's not something you, you can ignore from Seeker either. But the question of whether somebody makes money, loses money, that's not the concern of Seeker. In looking at the fiscal impact work that this consultant's being asked to do, I think it is legitimate to request that he consider the issues that are raised under the pilot agreement, the issues that will be raised in Seeker, and ensure that the report he provides addresses both of those, because they are, I think, almost incapable of being separated entirely. But it's not to say, well, this is economically, you know, this is economically unfair. Unfairness is not the issue. The question is, what are the impacts, what are the mitigations?
I don't, I don't know whether it's unfair or unfair, I just want to ask the questions.
Yeah. When the consultant does the impact study, is he going to do just on what is said here? Or is he going to look at if they did, if the taxes were paid, what the impact of the community would be by the input of, of new taxes coming into the computer, the community, how it would affect the budget in that particular way as well? In other words, look at it both ways.
Well, I'm having a hard time looking at that other side, since I don't see a way that that could happen. That they paid full taxes. I don't understand.
Well, it's going to, still going to have some fiscal impact on the community.
We're not going to do it.
It may...
That'll be a new rule, I mean, as far as taxes go. You know, if you have the pilot, it's just math.
Yeah, but the math is, is that your project comes in and you pay a million dollars in taxes, that is going to affect the budget and the town, because you're going to have an input of taxes coming in to the budgetary process. So I'm, I'm just asking if they're going to look at it both ways.
Yeah, but we're going to, one thing about that though, Tom, is that if you start to look at it both ways, you can start to look at it from zero too. And that we have not done. We've not said that this project shouldn't pay anything, zero, because it's a public benefit project for the college. That the applicant has not done. So I don't think it's fair to say, we should look at the, the dream landscape without a pilot, and certainly in exclusion to, we should look at the difficult scenario of no taxes, which is always how the college has done every project that it's ever done until this point, until this project. That's been the mod.
It's not a project of a, by the college. It's done by a private corporate, a for-profit corporate.
I believe that this, myself, from a legal standpoint, I believe that this project could be done, be tax exempt, wholly tax exempt, the way it's set up now. Not a different way, the way it's set up now.
All right, all right, all right. I don't want no more speculation.
But they're, but they're not doing that. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that it's, we have to have a fairness and a balance to how we're looking at it, that's all.
I think we got some issues that we raised. We, we talked about it. We're going to try and work with the consultant. I think we can certainly determine what the taxes would be at its, if it was fully taxed. I am, I'm reluctant to speculate on how the town or the county or the school district would do with that money if it was fully taxed and received it. I don't know if we would receive, residents would receive a reduction in taxes or there would be something else, so...
Spend more money.
They would spend, I didn't want to say that out loud, but yeah.
Therefore, it'll have an impact on the community, an economic impact.
Hey!
But I think that...
Or it could reduce the state aid.
One way or another, it might have an impact.
To respond to Mike's concern though, I, I think all we're looking at is a continuum with bands, so we can understand...
Yes.
The continuum. So I don't think it's...
I think the first point, the first...
Unrealistic, unfair to say, well, let's look at what this project would feel like if it was paying full taxes.
We, we can, we can know that number, but what I'm getting at is we got to establish the baseline. No knock on Wilmerite in trying to establish that baseline. We haven't been successful in getting the numbers. We're hoping to be able to get some of the numbers to establish a baseline.
Who's, who's collecting the numbers and having trouble getting them?
As far as I know, I don't have any numbers. Neither does Tom.
Tom.
Okay? And, so, it's difficult to get the numbers if we don't have, so we're going to try and stir the pot, get the bodies that we need in, to start talking about what the numbers are.
And how does this, this consultant get selected and by who?
Me in the back room? No. So we're going to issue the RFP. We have a list of names that we're going to try to put on and send it out to them. We're going to have an information meeting for the consultants to ask any questions they may have of the proposal and get any clarifications on it. Then we will get the bids back in and there'll be a committee of probably some town and planning board members and, and those to select the winning vendor. We'll have to color it down. If we get 10 of them, we'll have to pick the top three and then color it down from there. But that's basically...
So to be planning board and town board.
One of the things I asked Dave to do is, I really believe this is a planning board function, and that I really would want to take control of this, be totally responsive to the town's needs and the town's requirements and their, especially to address the issues that they've raised in their statement. But I truly believe that we need the answers to do the FEIS. And to the extent that we've raised questions here that may be needed for IDA, that we need the information here to make sure that we address those IDA questions. So I definitely would want that to be done by the town planning board.
Tim, if I could have you give me the, the wording for that sensitivity analysis on the vacancy rate? That'd be really helpful.
Mike, so the planning board itself will determine who the consultant is?
Well, not by itself. I obviously will sit down with...
So there'll be some participation, okay?
With, with the town members. I wouldn't want to be that autocratic.
Can we put a...
They may fire me.
Can we put a timeframe on, on when we can get this consultant hired? In other words...
It's, 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 we got time, so...
It says 2008.
Really? It was, it was in dreamland. Now you got me looking.
Yeah, 2008. Because I, you know, unfairness to them also, they need, you know, we, we, we can't have, we need a timeframe.
There is a timeframe.
There is one.
Okay.
That's something that wasn't supposed to be there.
But, so, the intent is to move quickly on this. My intent was to have moved quickly on this, but I guess it's necessary to be here. But anyway, and again, the same information that we're requesting consultant to do here, Wilmerite is also trying to get that same information. So truly, I, we've had a lot of discussion on the fiscal impact, the numbers that we use in DEIS.
Oh, I have.
I will say, those are the numbers that Wilmerite tried to get from the town and the people, and those are the numbers that they were given. They, it wasn't something they dreamt up on their own. I looked at them and knew that we don't have the right numbers in there. I think after a little bit, everybody else knew we didn't have the right numbers in there. But you have to ask the right questions to get the right numbers. And it's not rocket science, but I, I think we definitely know where, where we're marching to to get the numbers down there.
Town just closed their books too, so we should have real numbers now.
And again, there are different patterns on it. It's, you know, it's 2012, a benefit year, it may be something you would look at a little further back, a little further going forward. I also think that I am not remiss if there is a, if IDA asks that, 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 we do, we used to have it in the electric utility business, because we could never predict the price of oil. I think that's gone underboard, but it was called the fuel, fuel adjustment charge. If the price of oil moved up, we charged more on the electric business. Price of oil moved down, you charge less. But it was a floater and you, you figured out where that community line is. Since we all don't know the future completely, having something that allows that same adjustments tied to specific services is, could be very meaningful. Ie that the town's rescue squad gets incorporated into something else and their costs disappear or something like that. Well, there should be an adjustment. Town police department, number of calls has increased in the hours that we're concerned about. Well, there should be an adjustment written into the agreement going forward that X, they pick up X percentage based on these factors. And we, we measure these factors on a yearly basis.
But that's the key, is that we're required to make those suggestions to the IDA, they will not do it.
Yeah. All right, comes plus. I'm not going to get...
Dave and I were talking about that on Friday, is building in the, building in explicit assumptions to the service, the nature of the service, and the cost of that service. The example of ambulances, ambulance calls increasing from three to 20 almost because of different service requirements that have evolved. So you build those in and you say, this is what this number is based on. And if those assumptions change, the numbers change. But that's got to be the way it works.
Yeah.
And it can be off to the fact, it can be projected or reconciled. I mean, there are different ways of doing that, too.
No, I, I think with the IDA is they're not going to actively try to include those things, but they will be receptive if, if we're asking, you know, those stipulations to be, to be in the agreement.
Mm-hmm. Okay, have we beat you to death? I promised Doug would get him home early.
No problem.
Before dawn anyway. But I think going forward on it, we'll tweak the RFP to get it out as quickly as possible. We'll have that meeting, we'll look forward to that. We'll look forward to your trial balloon on a setup on it, and also to see that, get that out as quickly as possible, followed up by what we think we can discuss and review prior to March 11th meeting and March 25th meeting. Just kind of make it out there.
Great, we'll try to get most of it done, Matt.
And go forward on that. I will, to the extent I can round up the guilty parties, I'll keep you abreast of my success or failure on, on that too, and see if we can, you know, I see it as, you know, three or four different services that we rented, and I want to review all the comments and make sure I got them all, but then I want to sit down with, with the services that we're talking about and see if I get the right people in the room at one turn and, and have a kind of lengthy discussion of, of what their costs are, what kind of, what kind of numbers they have.
Yeah, I guess the only request we would make is that whatever assumptions and materials are provided to your consultant, that we be, you know, completely copied on all that.
Well, if you want to get a, if you want to get a good baseline, we should have everybody looking at it.
And the agreement on the issues, that's still actually those numbers.
Please, don't get us started.
I've not had anything for three years.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Uh, next meeting on the 11th. Everybody going to be there? Okay, I think that's all we have. But the extent that we want to get this thing out as soon as possible and, and really have a meeting after a week of having them come in, ask any questions on it. It may be helpful on it. He's got in here March 12, 10:30. If it works, let me know.
I'm, I'm available if you...
Okay. Well, I'd like you to sit in, to see what kind of questions they ask and be able to answer them and expand on it. Because the better they understand what we're looking for, the better we can do it on it. So keep that in mind, okay?
Appreciate it.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you all.